Chief Rowe?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to bring some youngsters up to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, let it.
To the flag of United States of America and to the flag of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living, dead, and just for our own.
Nice job. Clark, call the row, please.
Tim.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
Patricia. Jim.
Jim.
Sarah. Justice.
Here.
The only announcement that I have at this time is we need to give a thank you to the Johnson County High School players and their presentation of the Lion King Musical performed at Sip Theater in April. Under the direction of Mrs. Emily, help me with that last name, Warren. They performed for over seventeen hundred people with at least five sold-out performances. Travelers from Chicago, Indiana, Alabama, and Lexington, Kentucky were treated to a wonderful performance by this group, and we want to give a shout out to them. Also, I had a gentleman visit today from Summit Engineering on the Carter Lane project, and they were supposed to be up there doing some drilling. Already up there?
Yes, sir.
We just had a little bit of a problem getting a a certain written permission for a private entry, but we've got that now, so it should move along a little bit better. And I need a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, April tenth, twenty seventeen.
I so move that we accept the minutes of the last meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You've got two sets of minutes? Oh, yeah, a special call meeting on April thirteenth, we need approval to, for that one also.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes also for the special call meeting.
There.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need an approval for departmental reports. No, now his is next. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, this is his. Approval to pay the bills as presented.
I might get voting because I'm typically, I don't do so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The first order of business is the first reading of the budget ordinance twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Are there any discussions on the first reading?
There was one, one, one comment, of course, I, I went in and see how our, last Friday, talking to Jamie, talking to Mayor, and went over, you know, I can wait to some budget, everything looks good, I like the budget, I do. The only one thing is, and I don't know, did you bring the one with the two point?
Didn't bring it, but I definitely checked it, and it is fifty thousand.
Okay, well, I, I, I make a suggestion, and, you know, and I made it to, to the mayor and, and to her, the, our goal is to not have that cost of living increase, we're not going to do it. And it's two point one percent for their, for the policy, okay, since ten, two thousand and ten, so we're talking seven years now, you know what I mean? So I think, I, I, I think that when we do this budget, my motion is that we add the two point one percent increase in there. I think it's time to do it.
So you want to add that for the second reading?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I guess whatever we have to do, we have to do it on the second, first, and can we add it now, or what do we do?
Jamie, can we add that now, or would you rather give them a little time to mull over it?
It feels like they want to, if there was no other problems, you want to go ahead and pass the first reading.
Pass it, yeah, okay. Uh, I, I might get motion, but we add it to there, and you all, do we have the money, or can we discuss it, or whatever?
We
Well, we did talk about that, you know, because
Yeah, we talked about that some. Uh, the thing we'll have to do is to look at some, amending a couple of ordinances in order to get that two point one percent that we need. But I think what we can do, we can go ahead and pass this first reading, and then we can get together individually as council and mayor, then we can go over what we need to do to possibly give the employees a two point one percent raise.
Well, if you, well, I'm not up in there, let, to Daniel, was that we, we, we're down to employees, okay? So, we literally, when we, she and I discussed it, right, and we figured those two employees would, would cover, you know, on, on back, to not get anybody, to do it on, on back, you know what I'm saying, and that, uh, that would cover the, the, something else, though. So that's where I was coming up with the money, but, and then Bill, like, if you've got some other ideas?
Yeah, there's a couple other things we can do to come up with that, to make, make up for that money.
What do you all think, I mean, you know, that's just, I, should I do?
I think it's great.
And so we're going to pass the first reading with the possibility of putting a two point one percent raise in for all city employees, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make it motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I'll turn this next one over to Mr. Gary McClure, because he came up here before this meeting started and tried to explain to me what this meant, so, uh, I'll let him explain it to you. We need to open bids on nine-one-one radio update. Now, do you need to explain it before we get a motion in a second?
Sure.
Okay.
This is a grant application to the state of the nine-one-one emergency service board. With this grant application, they require us to, of course, have to create what we want to do. What we want to do is update the radio side of dispatch, uh, so we're pretty much in the line, okay? Uh, and in order for us to submit the grant application, we have to do the bidding process first, okay? So we got mission, advertise for bids, and I think we already said we have one bid. So, I'll go ahead and, and, uh, Mayor, give you the amount of that bid.
And where would that total amount be, all the way at the bottom?
Should be.
Total system?
Yes.
Ninety-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-eight sixty-four cents, is that correct?
That sounds about right. Now, what council can do, they can go ahead, if you so desire, and award that bid upon the condition that we get funded in the grant, okay? You know, nine one one can afford ninety-eight thousand dollars. Now, if we can give, give to us, yeah, we do that, we, we can afford that. This is the process we have to go through, okay? Yeah, and, of course, this document will be submitted with the grant application, and then I will say, here's how much this update is.
Okay, I've, I've got one question for you. Is there a match to this?
No.
There's no match? And here's the budget.
I stand, I stand corrected. When me and Regina attended their grant workshop, they told us, if we, if our local government wanted to say, we could probably put up five percent of this grant, we get extra points in the grant process.
So we would have a better chance of getting the grant, correct?
Yeah, and they didn't give us no numbers, they didn't say one percent, fifty percent. They just said, if you indicate that you could pay a little bit, it'll get you extra points in the scoring system.
That'd be like me telling a point guard, you give me five extra assists, you don't have to run twenty heels, correct?
So now, that part of it is, up to you folks, if, if you wanted to say, you know, we could probably kick in a little bit. But you need to have a percentage, so we can put that on the grant.
Five percent, forty-five, forty-nine, five, four.
Well, that's, that's about my pay grade.
Forty-nine hundred.
Forty-nine hundred.
Five percent, forty-nine hundred dollars.
Ninety-eight thousand.
Nine, we have the five thousand dollars.
I've been pulling five percent out there, or, oh, okay, that's, that's gotta walk, you know, if we want to operate-
Well, I was kind of thinking more like one percent, but-
Yeah, I, I defend that, too.
Okay.
But if you can give that, someone has a, a coffee, a carrot to give them to, this day, and you have a man in some shop, yes?
You get extra points in the scoring system, you know?
We can notice, we can get it, when they're, I mean, we can play on it, I don't-
We need a motion.
Yeah, you'll need a motion for that, but now, you've got to remember, if this, if this grant doesn't go through, we're not out any money, correct?
That is correct, because it's based on the grant going through, I make a motion that based on the grant goes through, that we approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And did you agree on a percentage?
No.
But, but you did my-
You didn't even say anything.
We, we've not done that, the applications do end in the month.
No, we, I, I, I don't think council wants to agree on a percentage.
So, you're letting them do it.
Okay. All right, now, we need a motion to advertise for bids for outdoor warning siren in king edition.
We've installed one outdoor warning siren at Station One, and we paid for it with Homeland Security, but fully funded. Figured I'd send our technical work in, it reimbursed. At the time we'd done that, there were some funds, and those of you who was on council prior, there was X number of dollars left over. Hold on, let me get, maybe six, seven, eight thousand dollars. So, council agreed, that particular night, to go ahead and ask Homeland Security if we could have the balance of what we had left over to do another siren, okay? With the fact that the city would kick in the remainder, okay? And council agreed to that, that, that particular night, going around that, okay? So, we got approval with Homeland Security, they're going to give us the extra funds left from the first siren, okay? And we're proposing to advertise for bids for a siren for the king edition area, okay? And the location of that will be, and I work with, uh, county judges, Johnson County senior citizens, and it can be located at the senior citizen building, that would be the location, so we're asking for permission to bid that, sorry.
I'm making a motion to bid, we're making a motion to advertise for a bid for the outdoor warning siren.
My second. All in favor? All opposed? Jim, did you vote against that? Ah, well, I mean, I, I know you was kind of, kind of spoke up there.
But that, that was a county project, that was a business for our folks.
All right, the last thing on the agenda. Uh, Chief Holbrook turned in his resignation, which was effective May the sixth, am I correct when I say that? We, and I, would like to thank Chief Holbrook for his years of service, his dedication to this city, and doing everything that he possibly could to make this city a safer place to live. And I think, everyone in this room, we need to give him a standing ovation. Now, also, Chi- uh, Chief Rowe, do, do you want to bring all your police officers up to present to Chief Holbrook a token of appreciation? Ask him.
Chief, could the police officers introduce themselves?
And you guys do a great job, you do a great job. All right, and the next thing that we have to do, Mr. Rowe, we have to swear you in. I thought you was going to bring your grandkids up here with you.
Never did, did I?
And you did advise me you didn't want to repeat anything, correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Then I'm going to read it to you, and you simply say that you affirm, raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I, that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of police chief, according to the law. And I do further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present, present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons in this state, nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor aided nor assisted any person thus offending, so help me God.
I swear it, or, okay.
Okay, now, you, we're go, we're going to do what now, uh, is, uh, Mr. Rowe, the second there, gonna? What are we going to do here?
We're going to clean our pants, and wipe, clean the bag, on, yeah. Oh, this would be a family affair.
That's good, that's good, I love family affairs. Be real careful there now. Congratulations. Congratulations, sir. Now, we will need a motion from council to approve that.
I'll make it, my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I want to open it up to council, does council have anything?
Yeah, Mayor, how we coming on the Taves Branches project?
Well, Mr. Bob Pack is back there, maybe he can fill us in on what's going on with the Taves Branches project.
Application went to Vision Water, and, for those extensions, ten days ago, uh, we've advertised for bid, got a pretty good beat on Day seventeen, which produces in the second, we're going to Mayor. Vision Water, we're hoping it'll be in six weeks.
So, once you get the bids, is there got to be a second reading or anything on bids, or, or can, will this project start this summer?
Yes, if, if, if there's approval, so we can, city councils will approve us, but, I don't think about it, we're, we're next month.
That's the most important thing, that we need done, my opinion, just with you right now.
Anything else from council?
Yeah, Mike Rowe tells Kim not to leave, I see her. Haven't seen her in a long time, she like my own.
He didn't hear you.
That's all right, there my eyes like it.
We'll, we'll, we'll get him later. Yes, you can.
How are we doing about, uh, cleaning up on the house itself? I haven't talked to anybody on committee in a while, so I didn't know.
I'm going to be honest with you, Ms. Sarah, and it's, it's a, it's really a sticking point for me, uh, it's going kind of slow. It actually is. Until we can find something that's got some teeth into it, that we can actually start forcing these people in this city to start cleaning up what they need to clean up, then it's going to continue to be slow. But we are looking at different things that we can do, to try to speed that process up. That's a big thing with me, and I know with the rest of you, is that we've got to get this city cleaned up. We have to get it looking good, because I'm telling you, we're going to move in the right direction. And the better we look, the better off we're going to be.
Third Street, the way people come in on, on that, on, you know, route, it always looks really nice. I mean, I think, I think Third Street really is looking nice, and some of the things I've seen happening on Main Street look very nice. And, so, the, the more we can do about cleaning up the neighborhood, too.
Exactly, and the biggest thing I got, and I'm going to say it again, is the people that own tenant buildings, they are going to have to stop throwing trash over the hill. If we have to do something to those people that own those buildings, we're going to do it, because that is going to stop. And just being able to throw a mattress out when you want to, or a couch out when you want to, that's got to stop.
Yeah, there's been a couch laying up on Scotty Hill and hole, they're used.
But I think the main thing for us right now, and I'm sure all of you will agree, we need to start cleaning this town up.
No question.
And I can promise you, I'll do everything I can do to do it.
Mayor, I've got one other thing that I talked to you about the other night. If we don't get the state to look at Third Street, some asphalt, we're going to have potholes there, the cars are going to fall.
I, I agree.
I'm all for the coal business, we need it, and you know, where the Narrows is closed, you know, they're, they're coming through town now. That, that street is real, and that's the main thoroughfare, and it's starting to deteriorate something terrible. And, you know, we need, we need to bring it to, I don't want to tell the venture engineer, somebody's attention, that, you know, we, you know, we, we need to do something with Third Street before-
You know, you know, a lot of times, we sit up here as a council and, and mayor, and we really don't see what the big pictures are. Well, to me, that's a big picture. To me, Taves Branch is a big picture. To me, getting fourteen twenty-eight open back up is a big picture for this city. And I know we've got to concentrate on things like Carter Lane, and we have to concentrate on other things. But we need to start looking at the big pictures, and start putting some pressure on people that's got the pull to get it done, or we're never going to move forward. We're going to sit here stymied, the rest of the time.
One thing we definitely need to do, if these trucks are going to continue running, it's an alarm clock at two thirty in the morning, they're going out of town. We need to pass an ordinance that as soon as they hit the city limits, there's going to be no jack brakes.
We, look here, we can, that, that, that's a simple fix, isn't it, Ms. Jamie? Me and Jamie can fix them ordinances, can't we, honey? That's a simple fix.
Or either, when they come off the hill at Weavestport, turn them toward Martin County, and let them hit six forty-five and go down the river.
I know, we were waiting to pay a license, no, no, I mean, at the intersection, I said, I told Ronnie, I said, that truck's wanting to pay.
Well, it's totally surprised me for the past, they've been hauling over there for the past two years, and there's not been a wreck on forty, from the time they hit forty to the time they get out of town here. Especially in the school zone over there, you get, now, they'll slow down when the lights come on, the flashing lights, but before that, man, they're handling.
They're starting to go through Broadway now.
Well, fourteen twenty-eight's not open, I mean, it, it's-
I talked to a lady from the state on fourteen twenty-eight, lady from Pikeville, the head engineer, and she said, they're trying, they're, acquiring the property is their dilemma, they're having difficulty purchasing the property to repair that road, that's what she told me.
Well, it, it, you, you, you got, you got some tenants that just want absolutely too much money for their property. So what we have to do as citizens, and what we have to do as council and mayor sitting here, we, we're going to have to start putting pressure on people to get things done that we need to get done.
I wonder if that's something different to their, I saw with the fire, it's hard.
I talked to Rocky Agnes last week, and I told him, I said, I know you're not our representative, but I said, can you help us in any way? And he gave me the contact, all the contact information for Mr. Wells, so I plan on speaking to him, too, but-
I don't know, does Kentucky have a condemnation law?
Yes.
Well, I-
I don't think county is issuing condemnation law, it's a property that's holding everything up.
See, here's the thing, half of that road is in city limits. And I was not invited to a table- Yes, if you remember, the city limits sign, the city limits sign starts there, and I was not invited to a table to discuss the opening of fourteen twenty-eight. Your county judges were, the county judges.
Well, how, how come with us being half owner of that road, that we wasn't invited?
Well, that's, yeah.
Four, four years, has it been four years?
Yeah, it's been four years.
Somebody lives here every day and drives a bike on the work, that's a lot of, it, it's been, it's been, I think, it's been four years.
Van Oosters, I mean, everything, it's a main artery.
I just wonder if it's affected our, our fire codes, or our ISO, or, you know, we use that law.
It, it-
I don't know, I don't know.
It, it probably will, but now, you're going to get me on one of them coaching rants, and I don't want to get on one of them, I can tell you. So, anyway, that's what we got to do, we got to all work together, move forward, talk to whoever you need to talk to, and let's get it done.
Now, let me, let me see if I can get the word back to the, to people, uh, for, for me, I'm not sure, after two months, let me see if I can get the word back to them, to get them to do that on their own, if I was having them in force, just try, that's why.
If not, I think-
Try anything.
I think Police Chief Rowe can take care of some of that stuff in the morning.
Try anything.
I'll get some cold ones.
No, I'm not even, no, let him roll.
I'm just going to get the word back to the cops, so they, you know, try to, you know, get it in the mud right there. Prestonburg had to do the same thing, back when they took the trucks out of town.
Mm-hmm.
Another thing is, on the third street, is that kind of thing to do with utilities? Does there, all of those utilities, right, where you all refer, or is that just a form of, they're just sinking?
Yeah, there's a big one starting right in the curve, if you notice it, there's a new, I don't know what's causing it, but it's obviously going to have to have some maintenance work done on it.
I mean, I'm that, I mean, it'll be nice, but, I mean-
I don't know.
Probably is, I'd say.
It's, it's pretty rough.
Okay, anything open from, anything from the floor?
I got a little bit, sorry, I, I, I remember a little, uh, uh, first for tourism, Lake Point is a big day here in Main Street, uh, the lives of Fort River Street, it is a Lake Point's important, starting at, uh, Good Race, Prestonburg, Main for Tourism, Prestonburg Tourism, standing up, and River Race, uh, halfway to, to airport, at Gold Ranch, at eight miles, where you bring it on down, I did to Water Lane still, sixteen miles to get out, so, all that information is on the Facebook page, the rest of our stories are Facebook page, where the college rock, Springling, follow that up, so Springling is on Main Points as well, all that information is on the Facebook page, too. Uh, you know, we still have the, the pit, uh, town mascot, you know, the treasure hunt, the parades, everything that Springling has had in the past, plus more. All the Van Oosters singing, uh, mainstream players performing, doing all of that evening, so you got that going on as well. Uh, from, Red Race is happening, we can, we can leave here, we can look outside, and put up some new swings, uh, the hell with beer is, uh, new commercials and swings for us, they also, they also told us last Saturday, we noticed this dog, we got enough in the apple. I had to give a couple of things to say, once they said, people wrong already, uh, got a phone call from colleagues today, on the Red Dog, should have gone in front of them, and all this, so, uh, we're really taking off for a big hit. One of the sites are corporate uses of swings, because they've already had corporate kids on them, adults on them, using the wrong way. Mommy big swing, the red swing, which is out there for toddlers, infants, and for mommies to swing on. Swing size is on a variable swing, and it's hand cut accessible, however, kids will swing on it as well, it's a bigger institution, so please, if you use it, you know, use it properly, within your name, uh, looks like I'm having a bad go for it, you do, so, y'all are got it.
Anything else from the floor? And before I make a motion to adjourn, Gary, what you got, bud?
Just a conclusion of the meeting, just want to make sure we invite everybody, if we have a reception in honor of, uh, having named the chief, and appreciation of the council, uh, Mayor, Coach, what I call you, Coach?
Look here, you call me anything you want to, everybody else does.
And, and thanks to, to you guys, giving that this, this great honor, we certainly like to invite everybody to stick around, and, uh, go to the reception, but it's been a while.
Could I have a motion to adjourn? Anybody opposed to that? We stand adjourned.